All right, we're gonna start the Town of Sangaville special select board meeting. It's Friday, June tenth, twenty twenty-two. It's two minutes twelve. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And, uh, major, the, the purpose of this meeting is, uh, we've been working on road project. Chris has been putting together some numbers for us, and so that's, that's what we're here for. What do you got?
Probably enough to scare you.
Well, we've been scared before.
Yeah.
Where do you want to start?
Uh, if you could kind of explain, yeah, what you're, what you're describing, and then we'll get to the dolls and sensitive, I think.
All right, basically, change now all of some of the plastic culverts that are junk. All of them. There's two that weren't dug up last year that I haven't, well, one of them I've looked at and it squished a little bit, but it's been there for a long time. The other one, I haven't crawled into it yet, but basically to replace the ones that are junk and put a two footer in, those would be about thirty-three hundred fifty dollars a piece. That's with the pipe.
What's there now, Chris?
Uh, eighteen inch plastic.
And what, what size did you say?
Thirty? Twenty-four.
Oh, twenty-four.
You wanna go twenty-four inch, well?
And then eliminate basically every other.
Uh, okay. But when you say twenty-four, you're gonna say plastic, what are you talking?
Concrete.
Concrete, good.
Can I ask something about the plastic?
Sure.
Uh, you're talking about down here in the, on the McNaughton Road?
No.
Or so as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we've replaced them plastics a couple times now, and we're in the water table and the frost table too. Wouldn't you think it'd be wise if we put the steel in and have a hole? And it, you know, will frost in them plastics, you look at them and doing this and that?
Right, I, I wanna go with concrete. Concrete's even stronger than steel.
Oh, yeah, but, you know, I, I don't know, but...
That's what he's talking, that's what he's...
That's what I'm pricing out, Butch.
He's talking concrete right now.
Plastic one.
Oh, I thought you said plastic.
No.
No, no, no.
Pulling plastic.
So that's a, a round one, or?
Round.
Yeah.
That's like three inches thick with steel reinforcement inside it.
The, uh, collars come together, howling come together?
Yeah, they got a bell end on them.
I've been looking, since you told us about them, I noticed when I'm on the Guilford Road, some of them have the bell end, you know,
Out.
Out, so you can see, like, okay, that's what he's talking about, yeah.
Let's hear it again, you know, your movement, if your collar gonna stay together, you think?
I've used them before and they have. That's what state uses.
And, and do they, Chris, is it just a pressure, pressure, um, connection? I mean, there's no gasket or, or collar or anything like that?
I can't remember if the ones I used before had a rubber gasket on them.
I was thinking there's a gasket inside of them.
Yeah.
In the female.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
That would make sense.
Yep, yep.
But that's...
Which would be a nice fit.
I don't know, these are all metrics specs, but...
Oh, yes.
They're gonna be a twelve inch, but that's basically...
Same idea.
What they would look like.
Yeah.
Eight feet long.
And, so how many, we're gonna reduce the total number of culverts, we're gonna expand them to twenty-four, so what would be the total, the new number of culverts?
Be putting in three twenty-four inch ones and eliminating one, two, three. Yeah, eliminating three eighteen inch ones. And there was one eliminated last year also. I don't know what you guys thought, but on that one, I'd at least dig it back out, take the gravel out of the bottom of it, and put clay back in to match what the rest of the road is, to eliminate a frost heave.
That's your call, my opinion.
Yeah, if we just, before we throw that pavement down, we want you to do the best...
Whatever your view is, the best way to do it.
Otherwise, you've got the ditch, now there's gravel on the bottom of it that's wetting that water through it still, so it's either gonna heave or drop. If it's, at least clay, it's more...
I, I think our opinion would be, you do what, the best you can with what you're working with out there.
Yeah, to make it work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the ones that we'd take out and fill that back up with something that's close to the road bed, so we don't have them...
Same type, same type material.
Right.
Yeah.
Could then all but be dropped a little, you think? They can't, no?
Very little, 'cause you'd have to go halfway to Santa Paul to cross Gratham's Woodlot.
Yeah, drops, I don't know how much it drops there, but...
Right, need to, I've talked to Ryan, and he's receptive, about going out there and cleaning them out to get the ponds away from the road, but...
Yeah.
Better have one.
You know, you'd take a few trees and go out there and just clean it right out, so you've got...
So the water goes away?
Twenty years before it would soak back in, at least.
And all the ditches you gotta do to it?
You'd have to, that west side.
Yeah, yeah, on Byrd Irvin's driveway there.
Basically from, yeah, per se, Irvin's driveway back down.
You check on the one that heads down the hill before you get to the burb.
Couple of bellises.
Oh, you don't know their names, I was right there.
You mean, right after Irvin's driveway, Butch?
No, down the other, there, where you go down the hill, down below your place, and go...
Oh, by Bob Brown's?
Just where you go down that steep hill to the burb.
Yeah, that's Bob's place. Bob Brown.
Have you looked at that one?
I haven't.
It's, it's gone.
It's bad.
Why come see to it?
Is there, yeah, no, I'm not surprised.
Probably plugged up.
So you're gonna do them all?
That's up to them.
Yes.
If, if, if that piece gets ground up, then that would be addressed.
It needs to be, like you said, put a good heavy one in there, 'cause it...
Is that the one, Butch, is that the one by Bob Brown's driveway, is that the one you think?
Right, right.
That's not that old, is it?
No, but it was plastic in it.
Okay.
Bob thinks it's ledged there.
Something's in it, you can't see to it.
Bob thinks it's ledged there.
I think it come apart, and if it on a hot top, it, we wanna do it and put it in.
'Cause we, we were brainstorming, gee, would it be possible to get rid of that one and put in a driveway culvert? And Bob didn't think that was gonna be possible.
'Cause then you got the stone wall and all the trees right next to the road.
Well, he don't think you can get across the driveway, 'cause he says it's ledged there anyway.
Yeah.
'Cause his basement level's kinda...
That's, yep, yep.
Yeah, this is where ledge is.
Yeah.
How many have you got in all?
This is just on that section from Anderson Road back to the north end.
From there and down, I think there was seven.
Yeah.
Then there's one on way down to the burb.
Yep.
Right.
That would be eight.
And, and the one before Dale's house.
I don't know, I think it ended up this way. Then on plastic, too.
Then there's, there's two more to the north. That, that one is squished down, and the other one I haven't crawled in.
If it's plastic, well, it takes a while anyway, right? If you're gonna hot top that.
If they're collapsing, my opinion.
If, if they're failing at all, we don't wanna leave them, whether they're plastic or metal. We're gonna put new asphalt down.
And if they're necessary. So what was you, you, back and forth, you said something about the one by my house, I heard that.
In my opinion, I'd eliminate it. Put a little material in to help push the water across Terry's pasture.
That might be a good thing, trying to use cement ones, and they got the weight...
Can you do without that one there?
All I'm gonna say is, my lawn gets three feet of water every spring.
Yeah.
And, but I don't have a culvert, putting it across the road.
Oh, you just, it just goes away.
It goes away. So...
Take that one out, Brian.
I would assume that that would be similar, if you, you know, worst case scenario, you'd get a little water there in the spring and it would go away.
Put a little material in to push it away from the road surface.
So you're gonna hot top from the, up the road?
Yep.
Yep.
All the way to the...
All the way to twenty-three.
Yeah, good.
I mean, if we have the money, that's, but it will be done eventually.
But you won't do it this year?
We may.
May, okay, you may don't money.
Well, and getting it done, I mean, we get the work done.
Couple of sections.
Yep. And then if, if we need more money and we have time, in other words, season, we'd have a special, if we had to, to get it done. I mean, that road's been a mess for quite a while.
I'd love to see that, at least in buying to this year.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, to me, that's kind of minimum.
I mean, that's what I, that's my hope, if we can get there.
So...
So with everything going on, my other question for you, Chris, and I'm hoping that, have you reached out to them yet, seen about availability of concrete culverts?
Basically, they have them per se in stock.
Okay, 'cause, I mean, just like everything else right now, trying to buy things isn't always that easy, so I just, as long as you found that out, that makes me feel better.
Where are they coming from?
New Brunswick, St. John's.
Have you purchased steel?
Yep. I called down to Parrish Families Union, and a two-foot steel was with a collar, a foot of heat, was gonna run you a little over twenty-seven hundred dollars.
Twenty-five hundred for steel?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Just to buy.
How much for the cement?
Thirty dollars a foot.
Thirty, so?
So about twelve hundred dollars.
Seems like a steal.
You save five hundred.
Yeah.
No.
No.
You save, you save...
Five hundred more, well?
No.
No, no.
It's like half.
Concrete's about half price of steel, right now.
Yeah, well...
And, and you think it'll probably perform better?
They claim it's a hundred-year product.
Wow.
I'd be happy with half that.
It is, I mean, I've got a stack of stuff.
I'd be happy with a quarter at this point.
Twenty-five would be good.
All right, so...
You look at I ninety-five, that's what I ninety-five was built with in the sixties. And the worst thing I've seen, anytime I've been working around the interstate with ours, was the frost would grab the outer ends, pull them towards the ditches, but those are on great big pieces, and the state's calling in and just dug it out and slid them back together.
What, what about, like, salt, how's concrete gonna hold up to the salt?
It takes a while, but it will deteriorate.
That's, yeah.
It's better than all the state bridges they're putting straight calcium on.
Right.
I mean, you figure for the percentage we're putting on...
We're gonna heavily diluted.
Well, I mean, like, we, I mean, we're kinda joking, but if we could get twenty years out of them, we'd be very happy for it.
I'll take out, like, two inches?
Uh, the two footers are right around three inches.
So you got six inches, you're gonna lose six inches of cover.
Right, but we're also gonna build it up a foot and change.
That's why I was asking about the outlets a little further to carse on for, you know, what you're gonna lose there.
So you've got, you also got some numbers on this building up?
Yes.
Yeah. I knew that wasn't gonna be free.
Six inches closer to the savage.
Well, no, he's, he's got more coming here.
We're talking about some, some other things as well.
Yeah, plastic pipe has already got at least two inches...
On each side?
Of each side, so we're only, in theory, it's only about two inches long.
Yeah.
Maybe.
And Chris, I know that this is a twelve inch...
Till you flatten the plastic out.
But, the, sorry, the thickness of the concrete for a larger is still the same, the thickness of the walls.
It's at least that thick.
Yeah, so this is two inches on this schematic.
Yeah, Howard's got a couple two footers that got damaged on a job he's doing, and those was like three inches.
Oh, okay, but those are two footers.
Yeah.
And we're talking about...
Two footers.
Two footers, oh, okay.
Yeah, and then we put in a couple eighteen's back up by, just low calumny, this is the top of the hill. There's another one right there at the bottom of low ellises, and another one back by the...
Do you kinda increase the size of them?
Some of them, yes.
How you gonna lose?
Have to dig down.
We're gonna go foot over the top?
Well, yeah, we're raising the road.
Those are already in a spot that's deep enough to put a two footer in.
Without doing any...
We never had any combo with them on that road, had we, with the mober floating?
But we're going to eliminate some, Butch, we're going to eliminate...
Oh, so ice, then you're gonna...
Right.
We've been close.
All together, there'll be four that are eliminated, 'cause one was taken out last year. Yeah, but I mean, some of them are a hundred and fifty feet apart.
Right.
Right.
Doesn't make sense.
Right.
But at that on end, if somebody talked to the landlord, this way you're gonna change them, get them two or three, they would let you, you know, do a little...
Right.
If you went another thirty, forty feet, you probably gained that amount back, is what I'm saying.
I think two of them will be on Ryan, I've already talked to him, and he seemed okay with it.
All you gotta do is cut some brush down there, down the x ray, and make your, see if you can gain another three, four inches.
Right.
And some of them need to be clinked anyway, right?
They all do.
'Cause they, they go on just a little bit, stop.
And a bunch of them, the material that's washed around them and filled in.
Some's good.
So basically, removing, taking three more out and replacing the other three with two footers, and then going up above and doing the other two with eighteen's, and some ditchware, we're around twenty-five thousand for that. And that includes the price of the pipe.
Okay, but that does, does that include the material to raise the road to twelve inches?
No.
No, okay.
So that was twenty-five thousand?
Yep.
Twenty-five, one ninety.
That include all of them here, right?
Yes.
Are you gonna need any much rock?
On the end, you should rock the end.
Right, that included the...
Okay.
Figure rip wrapper on the ends.
Yep.
Trap repair.
Yeah. Correct for trap.
Angular rope.
Yep.
Right.
And that is reusing some of the good gravel off the top, 'cause, you know, you bought it once, you don't need to throw away.
Totally agree.
Yeah.
Again, your call.
And provided it can be dug out clean.
Yep.
Some of that will be contaminated on each side of the pipe, and that'll go somewhere. But then haul it in some clay-like material. And that's the thing with concrete, you can put so-called native soils right back over the pipe, up to the top of it, and take the gravel. You don't have to put this crushed stone into perfect gravel surround it.
'Cause you got a pipe that'll support the, will already support the load, whereas the other way, you have to go.
According to the paperwork here, it says ninety-five percent of your strength in a plastic pipe comes from the material around it.
Makes total sense, correct. Yep.
Ninety-five percent of your strength of the concrete ones is the concrete pipe.
You could drive over it with, oh, nothing.
You could put that two footer with a foot of material.
It'd be okay.
It'd be all right.
Do you get the flat ones too, like they did up on...
The box ones, yeah.
Well, you can, I think American makes that.
I don't know, I just wondered.
And somebody over at Madison is making like a...
Box one?
They're not a full box, they're like a TP or a, or a half round, that they're using on the woods.
I've seen that, yeah.
I just heard about them, that they use a lot for like warehouses or...
How would it be the same then on that one, with the other one?
I don't know what the specs on those are.
I would think with the box one, you'd have to go bigger to get the same flow, though. You're gonna get more turbulence in a square than you are around.
I don't know.
You probably get them different widths.
Yeah, some of them, almost like a bridge.
Mm, right.
Like four or five feet.
Yeah, they're huge, yeah.
You know, doing those, and they're making like concrete precast bridge panels.
Mm.
They, they use like waste blocks and build your battlements, and then you lay these right on.
Stress pounds.
Yeah.
Yeah, like a parking garage.
Yes, exactly.
We have, built our house with those.
Do you know how them go together, them square ones?
I think they, same idea, they either fit face to face, or they may have a lip, and they have a lap.
Yeah, this is lapped.
And then they'll use like a rubberized membrane, sometimes on the outside to go over them joints also, and they, sometimes they're grouting in on the insides and outsides. Then gravel them and...
What are the specs with regard to the compaction around those concrete, um, pipes?
Basically, like any of the...
Oh.
About every six inches.
Like you said, it's not like the plastic, you don't, you need to get it through an angle and change, but you're not looking for strength there.
Biggest thing is you don't have to have that perfect grading material.
Mm.
And especially in that road where it is wet, when everything's saturated, you've lost strength. That's what, I mean, that ground's woven, so it could be perfect.
Yeah.
And then come unseasoned, when stuff moves, it's just all soft, like a bowl of jelly, and then you step on it and it goes down.
What about the driveway culverts? When downhill, when you first went Soul's No-So.
Yeah.
The one on the right, completely gone, the driveway culvert's there.
We did one.
Hellises gonna change.
But just a small driveway culvert.
You mean Moulton's?
I think it's right there.
Moulton's is done.
Yeah. We did that.
But ain't there another driveway?
There's one at the, there's another one at the barn, that ain't been done.
One, we did one, he was a fireman, he's a fireman.
That's Calvin Ames's, we did that one.
Yeah.
But he's talking Al, Al's Moulton's house, old house, we did that driveway, and then, but there's a second culvert for that barn, that's crushed. Well, it's not crushed, it's completely rotting right out the car.
Water going right over it.
Yeah.
You're gonna need, and down with what the hill was one.
Right, you got Nadine's, and does Dean have one?
Yep, she's gonna have one.
One there is on the outside.
Right.
The Kielmanic on a few of them years ago, but something in you.
Yeah, those ones there, I just want steel there.
From that to that, they had a few cars. And one, he says you read twenty-three on the left, that first house?
Yeah.
That one, that one's completely gone.
Half of it is.
And the next one above it, that goes into trail?
Yeah.
It's too rare, so you'd have to have them too. You're gonna have to have half those and others.
Do we, is that another spot where you really need a culvert? I questioned that one myself, I've never seen water there. I'm just questioning.
Hey, if you don't have it, it'll make a problem.
But I mean, there's no ditch there either, though, really.
It's...
I mean, you are, a six-inch schedule eight, forty PVC pipe would be better than a culvert, per se.
Better than a eighteen.
Yes.
Some steel up to the garage.
Yes.
I don't know.
Kinda like that one down by, that's what that should have been, that should have been...
Down by...
Yes, that's exactly.
Down way down, down by Mike's place, we replaced a culvert for that trailer, braces.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
That should have been a six-inch PVC.
Yes.
Or just an iron...
Or similar.
Yeah. Butch says we got some iron pipe up there.
That was, yeah, we did the eighteen one, and... Well, we did it that day, decided it had to be a big one. It sticks right out of the ground, they just put more gravel over it. It's like a mountain.
Two snowstorms, you're gonna be plowing top of that culvert?
Yes, exactly.
That's basically what I got.
Did we get the number, the next number?
We're, we're, I think we're going to the, now the elevation, right?
Yes. That was just for the culverts that are crossing the road. Yeah.
Hello?
To grind it?
All right, I'm here to register my...
Were you registered? Do you want it all broke down, or just one big number?
You, you just described the steps and then one big number, I guess.
Do you want, do you want me to go get a photocopy of that, so that we can just run down through it with them?
Are you doing grinding by the mile? How did you figure that?
Square yard.
How do we normally, like, if we hire somebody when we do paving, how do they, is that, do they, don't they usually do that by the mile?
I don't know.
Or by the foot?
I don't know either, I don't, I don't, I just...
So we can do a comparison, that's all I...
Right, I talked to Howard, he said, oh, this is backed on square yard, 'cause you got variable on the widths.
Right, and that may be how it's always, I just...
Maybe, I don't know, Chris.
Then Bob talked to Stan Kitchen, he said same thing.
Okay. Yep, I bet you're pretty close.
Yes.
He said, yeah.
Just wanna make sure we're all on the same page, that's all I...
Between a dollar, a dollar and a quarter a square yard is what Stan said. Howard had bikes to a bunch down the, the airport in Augusta, and that was ninety cent, oh, eighty-nine cents, but they're right out there on the timer. So, I figured ninety cents.
Okay.
And that would be going, probably eight inches, enough to take the backhoe.
Till you hit a rock after that.
If there's any gravel below it, great, if it's stone wall below it.
It's just to clean up the...
That's it, right. So, going from the south side of the Anderson Road intersection, back towards Irvin's driveway. Pole number twenty-three is thirty-six hundred fifty feet in the road. So just to grind it, be seventy-six, sixty-five. Then compact degrade it, give about three thousand. So that's an estimate on time there.
Yep. Hit or miss.
Right, it could be less, or it could be more, it all depends on...
You still got your voluntary rule, right?
Till like eleven grand-ish, is that money?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, seventy-six, sixty-five, plus three thousand.
Plus a lot.
Yeah.
That's...
And, and what are we doing beyond Irvin's?
That would be just, I'm just, all this is just for that one section.
That one section that we talked about.
That's one section, 'cause we're gonna raise it.
Okay.
'Cause that's gonna be the biggest chunk, and then if you decide to grade, don't grind it backwards.
If we're gonna pave, I wanna grind, that's me, just because of what we've dealt with in the past. Seems like, it seems to me, and even, you know, if you follow, and I know it's not comparable, 'cause I didn't put enough hot top out to amount to anything, but if you would've looked at the avenue before they paved that, even though it was that thin skim coat, it wasn't even a month later, every crack that was in that hot top before, you've got every crack comes right up through that new pavement from the mountain.
No.
It's 'cause that was only two inches of binder.
Yeah.
Last time they grounded and paved it.
Go around and make...
Where was that?
From Magreys North.
Correct.
Yeah. That only got two inches of binder when they grounded the last time.
Right. So... But you got all that even from, say, once you go by me, when you go across the flat, like Johnny's old place, where that's all wishy-washy, if we don't grind that, grade that out?
Add some material.
And add a little bit there, I don't think it's super, but, yeah, enough to get it smoothed out and straight again.
Right, the last piece there, I would, some people suggest adding material and grinding it in.
That's what I was just gonna ask you.
And that's what Brian did at the airport, he said they used two to four inch stone there. So there was nothing smaller than two inch in it, so you weren't adding fines. And they ground that, and that'd be a good spot where it's only two inches big, pinched up, and everything else already been ground up, you know? At least till you get to that sinkhole and you see the buildup.
Yep.
And that beef's that material up and that stone.
Putting the stone in with it.
Right.
But you can't do that down the other way, because there's so much shim in there.
Right.
You'd never, you'd never get through your hot top if you tried to do that.
Below your place, Dale, or that, in that swell, we're gonna spend this much money, wouldn't it be wise to build that up a foot? That's an awful dip there.
Yeah, that's what he was just saying.
That's what we're talking about.
But I don't, you're not gonna be able to build that up a foot and then grind it, you're gonna have to grind it then build it.
What I'm doing, then build it.
You gotta grind it first.
Yeah.
Yes.
So you're gonna put a patch on that. You don't know how much, I'll go a foot, I did. So that's all soft underneath that, too.
I take that yank out, go like two feet in the belly of it.
Oh, yeah.
Take it to...
It's like the money to spend it, it would make it real...
Start grading, I don't think it's that big of a place, I don't think you're gonna spend that much money, eh?
Yeah, it's like four hundred feet.
That's what I'm saying, and by the time you tape it that...
Yeah.
You take in a little bit of that section that was paved last time.
But you maybe, I know Bob's got a ton of ledge right there, but I wonder if you couldn't do something in Bob's a little bit, and get rid of some of that water.
Get out the field and...
Yeah.
Do some testing.
Yep.
And he's probably...
Bob would probably find that, but that would help that road too, keep that water the hell away.
You're good to fix it while you're right there.
So...
Rather than have to get it hot top.
'Cause once you get, so what we just talked about, and then what we talked about from Anderson up to Irvin's, from there forward, the road itself, there's no more, I mean, that's just grind and paint.
Right, from Irvin's driveway north.
It's good.
It should be a... The question would be that, those two culverts that are...
Yeah, the culverts need to be done, but, but there's no more road work, per se.
Right, just be the change in the driveway culverts and...
Right.
All the numbers I got is just for that, thirty-six fifty, and that gives you a good idea on what...
Mm-hmm.
The rest would be...
Yeah.
How much you gonna put on it, David, you're saying? How much you gonna put on it, Dave, with this? Gotta put one coat this year and.
I don't think we're gonna be able to afford to do a binder and a top coat.
Well, I, I, we, we probably have to go have another meeting.
Correct.
But.
You might put one coat.
That, we, that would be our, our minimalist dream, I guess, yeah.
Two inches of binder.
Put a binder on?
I would go estimate today, and then subject to change, obviously. Just to do that whole section, you got a hundred fourteen thousand.
What are they giving for number per ton right now?
So that was a hundred and forty.
That's all the way?
That's not that bad, yeah.
That was just about that.
Lorna, what did we pay ton last year, do you remember? I don't, I, I, I thought it couldn't be a lot more than that.
I did too, that's what I'm saying, one twenty, I bet.
It's one twenty a ton?
That was, that was a couple hours ago.
Yeah.
That was.
That's fine.
That was like, no traffic control, that's.
Yeah, that's material.
Right, light.
Yeah, that's not bad.
No, I mean, now, I mean, you put that number with your other number, and we've, we've really improved. What is probably the worst road in Sanginville immensely.
So. But. Surface was, he said a few dollars more, so I added five bucks to that. So you're talking like a hundred and eighteen, seven fifty for two inches of surface. I don't know what you did in East Sanginville. If it was an inch or an inch and a half.
It was an inch and a half.
Inch and a half.
So.
That's kind of in the two inch binder, inch and a half.
Didn't we do that on McPeters too? I think we did binder and then an inch and a half.
Yeah.
That was, that was at twenty-one feet wide, which is what the surface is now.
Okay.
Right.
Did you get this number from Stan?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
What about the west number, they got the east Sanginville road two wide?
Well, that's, that number right there was at twenty-one feet.
With the Sanginville road two twenty-two?
Yeah.
It's two wide.
What's Stan's availability?
He's busy, everybody's busy.
Yeah, yeah.
He said that section he could probably work again.
Yeah, but I don't want the section. Do the road.
Yeah, no, ideally, who does is gonna get the whole thing.
Right.
I mean, or get all the money we got, so.
So it depends on if you wanted to do that.
So we start there.
You go to the north end, or if you want.
So why don't we just reach out for a bit, paving right now for a bit?
And go for there, and do more events work further down.
What's your schedule on, on this first step?
I'd like to say first of July, if the culvert's.
Done or starting?
Starting. So it's gonna be probably a month, three weeks to a month, if everything went well with weather.
And you're gonna have to shut down that road every time you do a color.
That would be good, at least, I think last time when they did it, it was like from seven to.
Yeah, whatever, whatever.
Yeah, whatever you need to do.
Basically after the school bus.
Right.
Oh yeah.
Honestly?
Well, full of July, I mean July.
We can shut the, the road can be shut, it's not, but either way, because this road shutting it down doesn't bother me at all. Because you can drive around, and you're not talking that many people. The only people this is gonna affect is the people that are through people, hundred percent.
They're headed to Bangor.
As far as I'm concerned, and I live on this road, and I'm sure others that live on the road. For this project, if you said that road is closed Monday through Friday, so you can get it done quicker, I think every resident would agree. And be okay with that. So it's whatever, in my opinion, whatever it takes to.
Do it.
To do it, get it done, and get it done right.
There on the gravel and all that.
Sure.
Emergency vehicles could go about what.
Correct.
Speed the project up, rather than waiting.
Yeah, it's, it's just doing the culvert's a lot easier.
Yeah.
Oh, the efficiency of it, it's just.
Probably personally, you're gonna be the most impacted, cause you live on one end and you go to the other end. So you're, you're actually the, probably would be the most inconvenienced if we closed the road. Out of all of us.
Except he can fill a hole and just drive right over.
But I mean, you can, but you've got a cheap way to go through that I can't, so.
I have a bypass.
Right, he already has a bypass, so I forgot about that.
Right, I already own all the way from Telmo to Anderson.
Right, so he drives through Anderson.
Oh, okay, alright.
So, but seriously, I just think about that too.
Chris, did you give us a number for the material building it up?
Not yet.
Okay, I didn't think so.
I haven't scared you.
Okay.
Getting the crush ledge out of Gordon contract, and he's switched over, he's got scales on his loader now, so everything's per ton. Roughly one point three five ton to the other, is what he kinds and tested out at. Whether it's certified legal scale.
It is what it is.
Yeah.
That's how he's.
That's how you buy it.
Right. Right now, just the crush material, it wasn't screened, he says eleven dollars a ton. But for that mass amount, he'd probably knock a dollar, maybe two off. Move down by it. But at eleven bucks a ton, about forty-one hundred tons to go eight inches. Compacted, and I figured twenty-five percent. For compaction, so obviously.
You would go higher.
But that was, taking that into account. So you should, in theory, you should finish with eight inches. Just the materials, forty-five thousand one hundred.
That's covers the Anderson, basically Anderson to Urbings. That's that rocks, okay, yep.
Then to truck it, place it, compact it, it's another fifteen, five eighty.
You're trucking it? Right, right, no, that, that's my question, yeah.
If I was doing it, who does?
Okay, so you're trucking it?
Right, it happened.
Correct, sixty grand, yeah.
Then, for two inch gravel, four inches on top of that. Out of ground. I called him, he doesn't have an inch and a half, he doesn't know if he would make an inch and a half this year. Cause he's had, had enough time keeping up the two inch. Two inches a lot more, after with the stone.
That's what Brown did, he do it for.
Too many fines.
Yes.
It's all sand, that's why the west road's garbage.
But I mean, it passed the state of the pack. I don't know, it passed the state of the pack, that's all I know.
It is in the past, but it's, it's pretty much all sand now.
Well, they get quite a bunch of piles in life, you know, I was looking at it, that's all. Might you write down and look at the file later?
At the end of the day, if you're the contractor that's doing this.
Yes.
It's gonna be your name on it.
You're right.
So you need to, nothing against it, maybe that's good material, you go look at it, you wanna use it, great.
Yeah, that's what I'm just saying.
Nope, hundred percent, yep, but you need to remember that.
Right.
They would save him some money, that's all in the town too.
Yep.
It's just.
If it's usable.
Right, and it's good enough for what he wants.
Right, that's thing, every pit has different veins, and you can make it or break it.
So we've learned that gravel, all gravel.
Gravel ain't no different than sand. Sand ain't sand.
Right. So, that was, almost everything over there is based on yard.
Yep.
Right now, nine dollars you have loaded for two inch gravel, fifteen hundred and eighteen yards. Should have rounded it up, but I didn't. Thirteen thousand six sixty-four and twenty-five cents, that's just loaded on the truck.
So my question, when you just said that. That's actually cheaper than buying the crush slate, right? Are you better off to just use crush slate, or do you burn it up in your fuel, cause you're traveling? That's what I thought, that's why I'm asking, cause.
I sat around the numbers, and it was gonna come out like three dollars more, I think.
Okay.
What's this stuff he's got out here under the ceiling wheels, ain't fresh, what's he doing now?
It's blasted ledge, went through a crusher down to four inch minus. And now Kelly's screening it, and he's got four inch rock, two inch rock. Well, two to four inch rock, then he's got like inch and a half minus with all the fines in it. Then he's got the big oversized stuff.
So, that's another answer was anything to you?
The four inch crush material, yeah, that straight crushed ledge with the fines. That'll bind it like concrete. And it all, and it rocks, so.
Right, it's all sharp.
It's not.
Yeah, right.
Till then.
Correct.
So on that spongy road, it should hold better. The gravel is just to help.
Yep.
Smooth it. Just, no, I, I was comparing numbers of Brian's inch and a half crush material. That's what it was, that was gonna come out more, cause that's like fifteen something a ton.
Well, but it's more comparable product.
Right. But I think that would be. I'd have to compare them side by side. But just for prepping it, the gravel's not as sharp, so it's not hard on everybody's tires and whatnot, but. You go other places, that's all they have is crush materials, so it works, but it was gonna be more money. Unless it came down to price a little.
I mean, for me personally, I would drive around French's Mills. The rest of the summer, if that's what it took to make this the right project, so. I'm not worried about tires.
We're not sure we're gonna let you do that.
Well, I know that, but I'm just saying, when you're worried about putting material down, cause you're worried about somebody's tires.
Right.
It is what it is, you know what I mean?
Right.
It's whatever's best for the road.
It's an option.
Right.
Educated engineer, no?
No. Yep.
So, I've got, we're at a hundred and ten grand roughly, to, to do our, that's before we put any binder on it.
That's before trucking.
Okay.
That was twelve and a quarter you had, well, that was trucking, placing it.
Yeah.
Rough grading and rolling. That was ninety-five sixteen, thirty cents. And then, let's just keep it from being totally unbearable while you're doing it. I don't know exactly how long it would take to get it as close to perfect as possible before they pave. But. I've guesstimated around four thousand just for. Greater time you roller.
Keep it smooth while the.
To get it. Right there before they pave, so it's not.
Right.
Like something Sanginville is. Cause that's a guesstimate, it's not set in stone. And then. Traffic control, flaggers, signs. I highballed the heck out of that, ten thousand, because you never know. Town's got signs, and if we're shutting it down, I don't need flaggers. Or, most of the time, it's not like Route twenty-three. If somebody does come through, you can let it through. So that, most of that could probably come out of the equation. That was just the number that Brian gave me, cause he, he did a quick number of what he would do, and it was. Quite high, but he broke it down in a way. Then shoulder gravel after we pave, that's figuring three inches out. At least two feet tapering, pretty much nothing. It's about three thousand sixty dollars placed. So of all them numbers, I have eleven thou, a hundred and eleven thousand five eighty-five, fifty-five cents. Roughly, with two inches of surface, and two inches of binder, that was another two hundred thirty-two inches, so. And then the price of the culvert and stuff too. That's another, you're still at the four hundred, but that's only doing that piece to a T.
Right, we say that, to go from there to twenty-three, is the grain cost and paving cost, and a couple of.
That's about the same distance again.
Yeah.
Be about half the money.
Well, you wouldn't have any of the gravel work already, you just have the.
You'd reclaim.
Just reclaim and pay it.
Right, that would be reclaim, compact.
Yeah.
Grade, roll it again.
And we don't have enough money to do all of it, budgeted.
Why wouldn't we spring, huh?
What do we have budgeting?
Well, he gave you a pay process, paying binder and top.
Right. It'd be around six hundred, just, just to pave that two and a half miles.
Binder and top.
Right. But if you did just binder.
Six hundred. Yeah, six hundred.
Imagine, I mean, I'd do binder there, and continue on down to Brockway's Mills, and do a little bit of that gravel work. If needed it, it wouldn't be as extensive. And at least get binder on that, the next year you'd be grinding. Do from Urbings north. You could grind that, shape it, bind it.
Talk the whole thing.
I, I think that's, I agree with you, Brockway is where you start, and you go to Urbings.
Right.
Just shot it.
Yeah, yeah.
As far as grinding and road work, but. We still wanna get those culverts from there done this summer, so you're ready for.
Yep.
We'll have trench bed over them, get them ready for next.
Uh, if we got far enough ahead, we could have a special.
Yeah.
But, I mean, that's a lot of work to.
That's a lot of work to get us to there.
I'm, I'm not that optimistic, but.
No.
Yeah.
But I'd start with whichever section you want, you start with, to see how things went. Cause if my grind had blown up or.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
But you're probably, I, I understand you're saying that, it's just gonna be a timing thing, cause your grinding price is pretty close to what everybody else is.
Right, that's. Everything else, I've tried to hold my hourly rates down.
No, I know.
Below state rate, which I don't tend, it's like, wow, that's gone up. So if I did run an excavator or something, then I'd be.
Yep.
A little. You can always hire trucks and, you know, that stuff, that's not.
I, I think, uh, I, we haven't discussed this, but I, I think going forward, we're probably going to work. At having a contract on anything of this size.
Right.
So, um, whatever we decide on, we should have him. Put it all together, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions for him, or? Do we wanna green light this today, or what do you guys wanna do?
Do you wanna see an itemized, as far as the contract, have it itemized, so you can look at it that way?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm inclined to, once we get that, I'm inclined to support. Prioritize from Brockway up to Urbings. And that's, that would be the priority for this year, and then prep beyond, that's kind of the overall strategy.
In theory, I was gonna have a top plan next year. About the price for me.
Who knows?
You can do one such as Lionel.
That's another project. So, yeah, that, I get, with regard to this.
Yeah.
If you would put that, then Lorna will send it all to us, and we'll, I guess we'd have to have a meeting to approve it. Actually, we, actually, Lorna can just spend the money if we, if we like the idea, right? Yeah, so that, I think that's, we're all in, I guess we're all in agreement that that's.
My understanding is, well, I even wanna just, yeah, review the contract.
Yeah.
But, I think what the understanding is, is it's up to the contract, it's supposed to provide the contract.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll need to get somebody to help me with that.
Yep.
That's, yeah, that's.
Cause the contract isn't to protect, it's obviously to protect you, not the town. More honestly, that's how it really works.
Yep.
Like, all the materials, would be, let the town pay that direct.
However you wanna, what you prefer to do that, put that in the contract.
You just could have verbiage it that way.
No, it's no sales tax.
That's how it all, that's what the contract's for.
That's right, so it's all defined, who's responsibility is what, and what's expected on both parties.
And one thing, and you, and you, I've never, ever seen you or, or anybody you work with approach it this way, but I, we have run into this, where, well, we did it, we didn't do it correctly, because you didn't wanna spend the money, or you, we don't.
The town told me I was supposed to use X.
Dale said it at the beginning, whatever you need to do to do this correctly, is the way we want this approached, so. We, obviously, we don't wanna waste money on anything, but we have to do it right, so, and I, like I said, you've always done it that way, so.
I love that, I don't wanna put my name on it.
Right.
That's why I worded it, it's the way I did it, cause you have to drive that just as much as everybody else does.
Yeah, I generally run it two to six times a day.
Alright.
Sometimes fifteen times a day.
One of the things we, Dale and I talked a little bit about, I'd be interested in your, is putting a weight limit on that road in the French's Mills Road. French's Mills Road is getting torn to pieces.
Well, you said half the conversation. So we had the conversation about a weight limit, we also had the conversation about just making it no through truck, truck traffic. Which is better, what's the pros, cons of, I wanna know the pros, cons of doing either.
Monson put no through trucks, on the North Gilford Monson Road, and the Blue Manic Road.
Yeah.
After the bridge was done in Abbott, cause that was the bypass.
Right.
So everybody knew that road then.
Sure.
And no through trucks, well, we use gravel pit on the Gilford end, right on the Abbott Monson line of the North Gilford Monson Road. Well, if we go to Monson, well, we're not going through, cause we're standing from the pit, we'll go through.
True.
It's not eliminating everybody that's doing business on that road, or going home, or anything like that, like I said, you're not pulling trucks out of, coming down from Greenville, per se, when Dover was open, taking that shortcut, hiding from the O T, coming down in North Gilford, Gilford Center, Warf Road.
We got logging trucks coming through now, I don't know if they're headed to Lincoln, or Howland, or where they're, but there's a lot of full logging trucks. It's just flying up the French's Mills Road now, and I, it's not the best thing for the road, but. I don't know where they're going.
So what's the, so what's the, what's the disadvantage or advantage if you do it by weight?
Then everybody that's doing any business on the road is, in theory, is supposed to get permission.
Bone gall.
Yeah, residents, what about resident, if you, what if you had a rig and you lived on that road, you'd still be allowed to go in and out?
You're allowed to go home anyways, right?
You're allowed to go home empty.
Yeah, I'm saying.
All the through, yeah.
Till wherever that truck is registered. So you take everybody to drive somebody else's truck, and they take it home at night, empty, this is still a violation, cause that's not where the registration is.
Right, yeah, some of them shouldn't be doing it now.
What about, I'll pick a dump truck, it's like three axle dump truck, is, are those typically gonna be over, or? Why not?
You have to be around sixty thousand, well, you can go fifty nine four on a wheel, ten wheel.
What's McFeeters, what's that weight at on that one, you remember doing?
Yeah, I think so, fifty.
Technically, just a wheel is all the way, unless you all roll.
Right, I mean, it allows UPS to go through.
UPS, the old trucks, that stuff.
Yeah, I think, I think there's an exception for fuel anyway.
Mm-hmm.
To a point, just like found commodities, it's to a point, don't abuse it, if you do, they're gonna come down, yeah.
I don't know, well, it's just something, I put all this money in this road, and.
Oh, I would, I would, at minimum myself, personally, minimum, I would like to see no through truck traffic on both of those roads.
What's that do though for Dexter? I mean, do we need any cooperation from them, I mean, you're halfway up the Soas Mills Road, and now you gotta turn around?
I would let Dexter know what we're gonna do, and then they need to decide what they wanna do.
It's just over a mile.
Yeah.
For Dexter.
I mean, Dexter can't say, no, you can't do that.
I don't know, I.
They probably wouldn't have much of an issue, cause they've done the same thing, they've posted some of their.
Right.
Dirt roads right down to like thirty thousand, because they were gone all pieces in the spring. And they left them that way, but they were short, dead end roads, there were few residents, some of them.
If, if we were gonna do that, and Dexter was in agreement, they would just run out and post the other end of theirs.
Yeah, that might be perfect.
But if they don't want to, it's just gonna be an inconvenience, who's coming? I mean, they're gonna drive to the Sangiovese line and find out if they can't, they're gonna turn around, let Dexter turn around, and have to go back.
I can, I can think of a few people that are located on Route seven that would find that to be quite inconvenient.
Yeah, but if you do a weight limit, everything, same people are gonna be affected, and aren't gonna be able to do it either.
Yeah, that's true, so. That's something, that's another discussion, but I, I think between now and when we're done, your project, so we should make up our mind.
What about, you think, just because we've started the conversation, should we have, wanna reach out to Dexter and let him know we are starting the conversation, to see what their thought is on their end?
I think, let Trampus know we're considering it, it'd be interesting to know what their stance would be on it.
That's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah.
And they're not surprising anybody.
To see if they, and to see if, would it matter on their end, would they rather see no through truck traffic, or a weight limit, or, does it matter to them?
And I've already talked to Trampus before, regarding when the roads were posted anyways.
Okay.
About the.
Yeah, you just, make him aware, we're thinking about it, cause we're gonna do our end of the road, and, you know, we've already fixed that portion that Harper'd laying up to the farm, and we really should protect it if we can.
That's held up.
It helps, yeah. Same kinda strategy, really.
Right.
Brought it up, yep.
Yep.
Maybe we oughta shoulder that, at the same time, that you're doing this one.
East Sangiovese needs it too.
Yep, yep, I mean, while you're over there, but I mean, yeah.
Some of that, I was thinking if we did pull it out for line road.
Put it back down.
Fill that dangerous slope in.
Yeah. So, yeah, write it up, and get it to Lorna, and I, I got feeling gravel be flying here pretty soon.
Give me some more numbers on the south end, I don't know.
Yep.
You have to do there.
Yep.
Like, review it, but.
Any of you worried about the whole thing being done, worst case, I mean, we at least get that culvert fixed down by Bob Ramsey. I mean, that thing's, that's a nightmare.
Oh, you stutter sideways, no matter how slow you go.
Really?
It's the pitch of the road, and the sharpness, and.
Twenty miles an hour, Mikey, you could send your eight sideways through the road.
But that's been a bump since I've been.
Ever.
Bob used to watch me go up through there when I was in high school, and he was afraid he was gonna fight me in the field, cause I'd come up through there on motorcycle, lean right into it.
Yeah.
Oof, straighten it up, go across the culvert, lay it back over, just.
Just hope nobody's coming.
Oof, and he watched me every morning. Then it's been changed since then. We are on that last piece that got grounded and paved, seven. Probably add like four or five inches of grind right into that. Just, cause that got like two and a half inches maybe, of three inch of the brown pit, when it was done. Blended in.
Okay. Anything else? Nope, well, thanks very much for, for meeting us today, and we'll, we'll advance this as quickly as we can. Motion to adjourn, second in favor, it's five minutes of one, and we.